Good, Rachel. So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the May 3, 2022, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. This time, I'd like to ask Pastor Robert Kendall from the Friendship Community Baptist Church in Dunkirk to come forward, please.
Morning, sir.
Good morning. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful to begin this morning by coming before you, acknowledging your lordship, acknowledging the kingship of Jesus Christ, your Son. God, I pray your blessings on this Board of County Commissioners. I pray that the decisions that they make today, I pray that the people that they recognize, I pray all that is done and said, Lord, would have your blessing upon it, and that we might do it with you in mind. God, I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
A pleasure to defy the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt an amended agenda, adding a proclamation for Military Appreciation Month and Teacher Appreciation Month. Second?
So, I have a motion, a second, that we adopt the agenda with two amendments to include a proclamation for National Military Awareness Month and a proclamation for National Teachers Day, Week. I think it's a week.
It's actually a month.
A month?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It should be...
That's what I was thinking. If they had my kids, it should be a year now.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. So, first off, I want to acknowledge some guests we have in the audience today. I'm not sure what the pleasure is, but we have with us Mayor Benton from North Beach, Mayor Mahoney from Chesapeake Beach, and Delegate Mark Fisher. Thank you, gentlemen. I hope we didn't do anything wrong. And, oh, and Councilmember Larry from Chesapeake Beach is with us also. Thank you, Commissioner Weems. We have State's Attorney Bob Hardy, Post Commander Jimmy Marins from the State Police Barracks. Gosh.
They're all in the back.
Man. Yeah, and they're all sitting in the back.
Kathy from the chamber.
Kathy McAdams is here from... No, not McAdams, I'm sorry. From the chamber, thank you.
Former councilmember Bob Carpenter.
Yep.
And now, I'm not going to say anything else.
Well, you know, if we do...
I don't believe that.
But, you know, Mr. President, if we do have a show that's really that big, we'd be remiss not to talk about, we do have Ed Sullivan.
I was going to say, we got Ed Sullivan.
All right. Now, we have serious stuff to do. Well, we welcome all of you here today. And as we mentioned, this week is National Business Appreciation Week, and later today, the five of us will be out in the county touring around different businesses. And just want to thank all of our small businesses here in Calver County for the great work that they do in providing services to our citizens. You know, we in Calver have a small community network, and it's great that we have family-owned businesses out here that we can all support. And as I mentioned, it's also National Teachers Month, Week, Day. This morning, I heard it was National Teachers Day, so...
I'm sorry, sir.
No, wait. But, Week, Week, thank you. Bonnie Barrett's in there, out there somewhere. Hey, how are you?
How about?
We're just going to have to ask everybody to stand up and introduce yourselves, apparently. You know, once you start that, that's the problem.
Yeah, be easier.
Yeah, yeah. So, the next item on the agenda is Proclaimations. The first one is for Children's Mental Health Awareness Month. Commissioner Gadway?
Um, I do not have that one. I believe I do, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Williams.
We're going to get ourselves together here in a minute.
There you go.
Too many disruptions.
Too many famous people here.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
It's Mayor Benton's fault.
Could I have the representatives? Ms. Jennifer?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Morland, Director of Community Resources. I want to introduce Pam Pierce from Calver County Behavioral Health, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about Children's Mental Health Awareness Month. And also, I'm going to ask all of our guests here to introduce themselves and come up to the podium.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us today. Like Jennifer said, I'm Pam Pierce, one of the clinical supervisors at Calver County Behavioral Health, and it's my pleasure today to talk about how fun this was to do, to collaborate with the schools, our behavioral health, and the Calver County government agencies. It's been a blast. And so, it's so much more rich in our community when we can include all of our people, not just one entity. And that's what a community really is. So, before I say anything about the importance of this month, I want to introduce a few people. Micah Beeston, Dr. Micah Beeston, from the Calver County Schools. She is our supervisor of the mental health... Come on, help me out. All of our mental health coordinator, mental health coordinator. Yeah, come up here with me. Thank you. So, you want to introduce yourself properly?
Sure. I'm Dr. Micah Beeston. I'm the mental health coordinator for Calver County Public Schools, and we worked collaboratively on this, as Pam stated.
Yeah. And we have Jennifer. Where's Julie? Julie's not here. She had to take her boys back. She was here from our community resources. We have Erin and Jennifer. Erin, you want to come up and introduce yourself to everybody, please?
Hi, I'm Erin Odom, and I am with the Family Network. I'm the local care team coordinator. Families who have needs for resources all over the county can come to one meeting and get resources from all of the collaboration like she described.
And I want to introduce our school-based coordinator, Stephanie Dayton, here, who has been a person... She kind of works quietly behind the scenes, which is my right-hand man. I always say, she's my right-hand man in all things fun, and I'm her right-hand man in all things criminal, probably. But Stephanie, thank you for all you do. You were a big part of this. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tia Myers. I'm the director of the Adolescent Clubhouse Program at the East John Youth Center. We work with adolescents, ages 12 to 17, 18 if they're still in high school, who may struggle with substance use or be at risk for substance use, who also struggle with mental health issues.
Hi, I'm Andrea McDonald-Finglin, and I'm the director of the Calver County Local Behavioral Health Authority. I also have some of my staff here. This is Sierra Ringley. She's our child and adolescent coordinator, so she's responsible for all things youth and families related to behavioral health in Calver County. And then, we've got Katie Wandashin, who's my adult coordinator, and then Rachel Morgan, who is our new grant specialist. And we just want to thank you guys so much for taking the time to acknowledge and appreciate the importance of youth mental health to our Calver County residents.
So, before we actually move forward, one of the things that I wanted to mention that's really important about Calvert Mental Health Matters or mental health awareness, something that came to my attention just recently is that we're changing the verbiage, and it's going to be Mental Health Acceptance Month. And that's been sort of the new push. And I love that better than awareness, because we need to accept everybody's challenges in this world. So, something that I think is really important to say is that our children especially need assistance. All of us step into the schools here and there, but this year, as children have all come back after being off from school for almost two full years, really, with this pandemic, we're seeing such this huge increase. I mean, like, with our younger children, I read a statistics that is 25% increase in mental health symptoms with just our littles, and in our high school, we have 35% increase. One in five children have a mental health illness or a mental health challenge or symptoms that are happening. I walk into the schools twice a week. I work in the schools, and I watch children come in with their mom and dad, or a sister, or a brother, or aunt, and they're just panicked because they get this anxiety, and there's so much increase in anxiety and depression that we see in our schools. So, my plea to the Commissioners, to our community, to all the adults in this world, is that, you know, a lot of times, as adults, even if people have their own mental health challenges, we can still step outside of that and kind of give our children what they need. Teach the children some skills. Who has held a piece of chalk, Commissioners, in the last... Before today, who has held a piece of chalk in the last two years? One, two. Okay, good, good. So...
You have grandchildren, you hold chalk.
That's right. That's right. If you have grandchildren, you hold chalk.
That one, the chalk guy, Lexi was, but that was the first one.
There you go. And so, it's really important to be able to play with our children, teach them the skills of the physical, mental, emotional, all of that. We cannot rely on just our schools, just our behavioral health programs, our LBJ, our clubhouse people. We can't just rely on that. It takes all of us to really influence a child. And sometimes, you know, children just need the time. They just need somebody to see them and to hear them. And that's where we're at right now, because we have such a workforce shortage. We have more children than we do adults, and that can work with them. And so, you know, we have children who are not getting services. I mean, a lot of children who are on waiting lists. And it's not because people aren't trying. We're trying. There's just not enough counselors, therapists, teachers' times, you know. It's... There's just not enough. So, anything that anybody can do that promotes a child and gives them some self-esteem and courage to face the challenges in the world, then go for it. You know, you're one of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas, local child and family-serving organizations, in partnership with Children's Mental Health Matters, a Maryland public awareness campaign, are observing May as Children's Mental Health Awareness Month. And whereas, children's mental health is more critical now than ever, mental health affects how children think, feel, and act. Mental health impacts how children relate to themselves and others, manage stress, and cope with adversity. And whereas, the pandemic impacted children's mental health, leading to increased awareness and reduced stigma, young people reported a 42% increase in the number of conversations they had about mental health during the pandemic. And whereas, Calver County Public Schools, Calver Library, Calver County Behavioral Health, and the Local Behavioral Health Advisory Council, in partnership with the Calver County Family Network and the Department of Parks and Recreation, will host a Chalk the Walk event, May 1 through the 7, 2022, to raise awareness about children's mental health. And whereas, students, school staff, government employees, and all students are invited to decorate sidewalks and pavement with messages and pictures of hope, support, and resilience to encourage conversations about mental health and well-being. Now, therefore, we'll be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of May be known as Children's Mental Health Awareness Month in Calver County, and by this action, we recognize the fundamental necessity of community-based mental health services for children and youth. Be it further proclaimed, that all citizens are urged to recognize and support the mental health needs of children in our community, given under our hands and seal this third day of May 2022.
So, the next item on the agenda is Proclamation for National Military Awareness Month. Commissioner Gadway?
Motorcycle.
Changing it up on that.
Motorcycle, isn't it?
I have a list.
Okay.
And I'm following it. I don't see any active-duty military in the house. Is there anyone in active-duty service? All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Willis? Marines are always in active service. And might I say, also, the Coast Guard is always active. And out...
Never heard that.
You just now heard that. As you see, there's always a little inter-service rivalry. Marines believe that they're best, but the Coast Guard knows it.
Oh, my goodness.
That was actually off a Coast Guard landing craft, sir.
All right, we are on schedule.
Yes, sir. All right. This month is Military Appreciation Month, and that is different from Veterans Day and whatnot, which honors the veterans of our nation. This honors the active service of our nation. We have Armed Forces Day this month, which is specifically for that. That's culmination. So, whereas, members of the U.S. military are on call defending the security of the nation seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And whereas, National Military Appreciation Month was officially designated by Congress in 1999 to be observed every year in May as a reminder of the important role the U.S. Armed Forces have played in history and the development of our country. And whereas, National Military Appreciation Month is a reminder to Americans to celebrate this patriotic month that pays tribute to those who have sacrificed so much for our freedom. May was chosen for the recognition because it has many individual days marked to note our military's achievements, including Children of Fallen Patriots Day, Loyalty Day, Memorial Day, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, National Armed Forces Day, and Victory in Europe Day. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that May 2022 be known as Military Appreciation Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the appreciation of the citizens of Calver County is hereby extended to all past and present military members who selfishly put their lives on the line to keep us safe and free. We ask that our citizens join us in honoring and recognizing the service and sacrifice of all military members, as well as those who support them, given under our hands and seal this third day of May 2022, signed by all five Commissioners. Thank you to all those who are serving.
So, we have anybody in the audience that served in the military? Why don't you come up and introduce yourselves and state your branch? Come on.
I don't mind if I do.
That's right. There you go.
Mayor Benton, if you don't mind, sir.
Maybe he was in the Coast Guard.
This is live, correct?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners, and those in the audience and those watching. Mark Willis, County Administrator. I am a former Marine, which means we're always a Marine. Thank you.
Mike Benton, Mayor of North Beach, always a Marine. Thank you.
Hi, Eric Allard, retired as a Lieutenant Commander in the Navy.
And Chris Gadway, U.S. Coast Guard. Thank you. We will ensure that this proclamation finds a good home.
Thank you. And we never want to forget our military. Because of them, we have the freedoms that we have today, and are able to do the things we do in this great country that we live in. It's because of their service. So, we always want to remember that. So, Commissioner Gadway, I believe you have the next proclamation also, which is Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month?
Do we have anybody here from ABATE? Come on up. Introduce yourself, please. Tell us a little bit about what you do.
Hi, my name is Angie Sawyer. I'm the recording secretary for the local chapter, the Calver County Chapter of ABATE of Maryland, a motorcycle rights organization.
Any... Come on up.
I'm Howard Kenter. I'm a member of the ABATE of Maryland, Calver County.
My name's Bob Spanberg, Jr. I'm the chairman of the Board of ABATE of Maryland, with the state's largest and most active motorcycle rights organization. We lobby for legislation that makes it safer, more rewarding, and a happy experience for motorcyclists. We spent a lot of time in Annapolis lobbying for legislation that helps us achieve that. With that in mind, I invited our delegate, Mr. Mark Fisher, up here today, too, to accept this proclamation with us. He's been very motorcycle-friendly. Motorcycles are a big part of this county, and long-storyed tradition of motorcycles in Calver County. I'm sure a lot of you are aware of it, probably just about everybody in here has somebody to ride a motorcycle in their immediate family or in their extended family. So, thanks for having us here today.
Thank you, sir. Mark? I'm sorry, Delegate Fisher. Would you like to say a few words? That's a first. Motorcycle safety is very important to me and my family as well. All of us ride. My wife's first motor vehicle was a motorcycle. Not going to mention the year of the motorcycle, because that would obviously give that away, but we've always rode. We've ridden a lot. And sadly, through accidents and collisions, we've lost friends, as anyone who rides a lot has. So, motorcycle safety is very crucial, very important. I encourage all those who ride to dress for the crash. It's important. When you're prepared, you stand much better opportunities of getting out without injuries and/or lessening injuries. When you're driving a car, or a pickup, or a truck, please remember that bikes are very, very small. They fit in blind spots. If you see a motorcycle that's got a headlight that's pulsating, motorcycle's not trying to be rude. He's simply got a safety piece of equipment on his bike that that light pulsates a little bit. So, don't get upset with him. That's just an additional safety feature. So, whereas, safety is our highest priority for the streets and roadways of our county. And whereas, Calver County is proud to be a supporter of motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And whereas, motorcycles are common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And whereas, it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our county and the state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas, the members of ABATE of Calver County continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness to the general public in our county and state. And whereas, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of the roads in Calver County and throughout Maryland. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of May 2022 be known as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage all motors and citizens to join together in an effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways, given under our hands and seal this third day of May 2022, signed by all Commissioners. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. I bring Parrot from the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office takes safety in our highways and roadways very seriously. We have a support services unit within the Sheriff's Office that often conducts speed enforcement and distracted driver initiatives. As we all know, some of those things play a vital role into our crashes in the county. And those that operate motorcycles always are the ones that have to be cognizant of those vehicles around them, because at the end of the day, they don't have the protection as you would have driving a normal car or a normal truck. So, we take it very seriously, and we wish you the best and be safe on our roadways.
Good morning, Lieutenant Mayor. It's Commander of Maryland State Police Prince Frederick Barrett. I want to thank you all for being here today, and Commissioners have recognized in this important motorcycle safety awareness event. Traffic safety is public safety, and that's something we all have to recognize. One of the goals of the Maryland State Police that's something we all have to recognize. One of the goals of the Maryland State Police is to ensure that Maryland's roadways are safe for all to travel, whether you're in a small car, a pickup truck, a minivan, a large SUV, or a motorcycle. All right? And we will always support you and work very hard to ensure that your safety is protected. Thank you.
So when I first campaigned four years ago, one of the first events I did was the North Beach Christmas Parade, and I was in line behind a group, motorcycle group, and they said, "If you get elected, we don't want you to introduce any laws, but please make the public aware to not throw their leaves or their grass clippings in the road because it's dangerous for motorcycles." So here's my public service announcement today. Do not throw your grass clippings in the road. It may seem innocent, but it can cause an accident and injury to citizens. So please don't put your grass clippings in the road. Thank you. So I've fulfilled that campaign promise.
There's always that one guy that aims his lawnmower and shoots all the grass in the road, and I can never figure that out, you know?
Don't want it in their yard.
That's why I have a bagger.
So the next is National Economic Development Week. Commissioner Wiens?
Director Oberg, if you would, madam, please.
Thank you very much. I know the proclamation has a lot of information in it, so I'm not going to take the time to talk about that right now. Again, Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development for Calver County. Thank you very much for recognizing this important week. I know we've got a number of our community partners here with us, so I'd like to ask them all to come up and introduce themselves, and then we can do a picture if you'd like. Come on up. There's a lot of you. And I would also just like to encourage everyone to support your local businesses. It's very important, and we've got a lot of great businesses here in Calver County. Kathy, would you like to come first?
Kathy Manny, Calvert Chamber.
Dana Boston, Pawtucket Printing.
Bonnie Barrett with the Calvert Marine Museum, and I'm also the First Vice Chair of the Calver County Chamber of Commerce.
Rosanna Vogt, founding Director of the Circle of Angels Initiative and Vice President of the Calver County Minority Business Alliance.
Gail Reed, I am the Chairman of the Board of the Calver County Minority Business Alliance.
Janet Jackson, Constellation. I'm also the past Chair of the Calvert Chamber of Commerce, and I also met my husband in a motorcycle safety class, so thank you for today's proclamation.
Good morning. Etzel Brown, I'm Chair of the Southern Maryland Minority Chamber of Commerce.
Welcome all. Whereas, the week of May 9th through the 13th, 2022, has been designated National Economic Development Week by the International Economic Development Council, and whereas National Economic Development Week was created to increase awareness of local programs and services that create jobs, advance career development opportunities, and increase quality of life among our communities, and whereas, Calver County's Department of Economic Development promotes economic well-being and standards for our community by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base, and whereas, Calver County is committed to providing a Department of Economic Development that serves as a Mecca for businesses, dedicated to delivering local, state, and federal resources to enhance the competitiveness of our community and contributes to our economic growth and vitality. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of May 9th through the 13th, 2022, be known as National Economic Development Week in Calver County to remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports the expansion of career opportunities and improves the welfare of all citizens. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage citizens to recognize the contributions of economic development organizations and the importance of building and maintaining a robust economy, given under our hands and seal this third day of May 2022.
Hey, Jenna, how are you? We're coming for a course soon, right? So the next proclamation, Commissioner Hart, is National Travel and Tourism Week.
Hi, do we have anybody here for national travel and tourism?
Good morning. If you just want to come up and say your name. Good morning. My name is Hillary Daly. I am the Travel and Tourism Specialist for Calver County. I work in economic development because my job is to get people to come here, leave their money here, and then go back home. So I have a couple facts to talk about tourism, and then I also am lucky enough to have several travel and tourism partners here with me today. So the travel and tourism sector is an important part of our state and local economies. Visitors to our state generate significant economic benefits to households, businesses, and governments, and represent a critical driver of Maryland's economy. Visitors to Maryland generated $1.7 billion in state and local taxes in the year 2020, which was, as we know, in the middle of a pandemic. This is equivalent to $775 in tax savings for every household in Maryland. In a normal non-pandemic year, the tax savings linked directly to tourism is between $1,000 and $2,000 per household. Visitation and visitor spending have obviously been significantly impacted by the pandemic, but travel is happening. It's just different than before the pandemic. Overnight visitors are now staying longer. Leisure travel has increased, and destinations with outdoor activities and attractions have risen greatly in popularity compared to urban areas. So yay. I've invited a few people that I partner with in tourism initiatives around the county to receive this proclamation, as they are all outstanding representatives of Calver County and are all amazing tourism partners, and I consider them friends. If anybody wants to come up and say your name, thanks. And where are you from?
Hello again, Herschel Green, Calvert Marine Museum Deputy Director.
Dawn Richardson, Marketing and Public Relations Administrator for the Town of North Beach. My most important job is keeping Mayor Benton in line.
Mike Benton, Mayor of North Beach. I work for Dawn.
Patricia Sanford, Jefferson Patterson Park and Museum.
Carla Richard, Operations Manager for the Town of Chesapeake Beach, which includes, I oversee the operations of the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, Kellams Field, and other parks and recreations.
Now you know who runs the water park. Pat Mahoney, Mayor of Chesapeake Beach. I'm going to take a quick second just to reiterate that for the second year in a row, we have special days at our water park that are for county only. That would be Tuesdays and Wednesdays. You know, you welcome every day, but on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, it's just the beach and county only because we want our people to just see the other parents and children that they go to school with and make it more of a home county kind of feel. So I had to put that plug in while I'm here. Hope I'm on TV.
Good morning, Larry Jaworski. I'm Vice President of the Town of Chesapeake Beach Council. I'm Chair of the Economic Development Committee in the town and Chair of the Calver County Economic Development Advisory Commission. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for their recognition. Not only have National Economic Development Week, but also Business Appreciation Week. Thank you.
I'm Bob Carpenter, the President of the Calver, the Arts Council of Calver County, the sponsor of the Barnquill Trail, and cheap plug here, also the owner of a local travel agency.
I'm not that important. I'm like the mayor. I work for them.
Well, everybody in this room, and especially anybody in this industry, knew all the challenges with COVID. Did the travel industry completely have to reinvent itself? And, you know, a lot of us in this room and me and Mayor Benton here had some real heart-to-hearts of how you going to handle this? Because, you know, all year long, you're going around, so what are you going to do this year? Well, we're going to go here, we're going to go there. And for some traditions are, you come to Calver County. People from all around the state, you know, around the country, come to Calver County, hit certain places, and through no fault of anyone, I mean, that couldn't happen anymore. You know, how you got on a plane? You know, what restaurant? And then the factor got in. People were scared to even work in the places. You know, no one knew how to handle this, but yet business had to go on. You know, bills don't stop, right? I mean, can you imagine, you're Monday, you're at work, and then Wednesday was really the big announcement, you know, that we'll never forget that. All of a sudden, everything that we knew changed. You know, there was Counting it Giant, you know, how many people were allowed to come in? You know, what was essential, what wasn't? I mean, we're still feeling the political debate over a medical issue. I mean, that's how impactful it was global. So, boy, hopefully this is a sign that every day forward is putting that in the rearview mirror, and we'll get back to humans are supposed to interact and meet each other and blow off steam and forget about work, and it's what makes us human. So with all that said...
Whereas, the week of May 1st through the 7th, 2022, has been designated as National Travel and Tourism Week, and whereas, the travel industry supports millions of American jobs, is one of the largest private sector employers in the United States, and provides travelers with countless benefits by helping families create memories, connecting communities, and enriching people's lives, and whereas, travel to and within the U.S. has historically provided significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than $2.6 trillion in economic output prior to the pandemic, with $1.2 trillion spent directly by travelers in the U.S. and the local economy by providing labor income of $74.9 million, 1,607 jobs, $16.3 million in adjusted sales and use taxes, and whereas, tourism industry suffered significant setbacks in 2020 and 2021 due to the effects of COVID-19. But our sites, attractions, hotels, restaurants, and the workforce that supports them remain committed to a strong and enthusiastic comeback in 2022. Welcoming visitors from near and far have always been and always will be the enduring character of the travel industry in Calver County. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of May 1, excuse me, May 1st through the 7th, 2022, be known as National Travel and Tourism Week. Be it further proclaimed that we urge all citizens to join in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in Calver County, given under our hands and seal this third day of May 22, signed by all five Commissioners.
So in Calver County, we are very blessed to have resources that provide opportunities for tourists, and, you know, the beaches and the parks and museums and Marine Museum is our great attributes. And as Hillary said, I tell everybody, we love tourists because they come and spend their money, and then they go back home someplace else. And we don't have to deal with the aftermath, but we greatly appreciate all the work that's done out there to promote tourism and help our county.
Don't forget to visit the islands of Brooms and Salmons.
Right. And I shouldn't forget Brooms and Salmons.
That's correct.
You have to turn on that road every day.
Commissioner Wiens is going there this afternoon on his business tour to visit Pawtucket Seafood, correct?
I am, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh, he got lucky. He got the seafood.
Right. He's probably going to get a crab cake for lunch. So we have a teacher in the audience?
We do have a representative.
A representative?
The doctor.
The doctor.
The doctor. So, house calls. Doctors in the house.
Yes, I just want to be clear. I am Micah Beeson. I am not a teacher, but I do work for the school system. I'm a social worker by trade. Work as the Mental Health Coordinator at the district, and I can't even pretend to fill a teacher's shoes here today or any other day, but as we all know, they're hard at work with our children at school. So I am happy to bring this back to the people that it belongs to.
So come on up. So first, I'm going to apologize because we didn't realize that this was occurring at this time. And this morning, when I saw the news, they mentioned it on the news, that it was National Teachers Appreciation Day, and I thought, ooh, we blew it. Because our teachers are very important to us. They educate our children who are our future. And the issues that teachers deal with today, you know, when I went to school, back with stone tablets, teachers didn't have to deal with. And when you hear the stories of what goes on in classrooms today, the pressure that's on our teachers is tremendous. So I didn't want to overlook, and we'll make sure we get it on the calendar for next year for sure, to make sure that whoever the board is doesn't miss this very important day, because we don't take our teachers for granted, and the support staff. So I have a Certificate of Appreciation. Be it hereby known to all that the week of May 1st through the 7th, 2022, be recognized as Teacher Appreciation Week. This Certificate of Appreciation is awarded for the commitment and dedication of all Calver County Public School teachers bestowed this third day of May 2022, signed by all five.
Just so you know, she was, ooh, ooh, let me go up front, and I was looking, just the way it worked out, but thank you.
So again, I do want to apologize. We'll make sure we take care of that next year. So the next item on these end is awards. Employee Recognition Committee Employee of the Month, Commissioner McConkey.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lisa Talamay. I am the Community Resource Specialist and the current Chairperson of the Employee Recognition Committee. I am here today to introduce Calver County Government's April 2022 Employee of the Month. The Employee of the Month Award acknowledges individual excellence for a superior job performance or special individual efforts in the following areas: effectiveness of public contact, respect for fellow coworkers, quality or quantity of work, contributions towards improving organizational morale, and actions that improve the county's public image. Anyone can nominate somebody to be an Employee of the Month. You could see me or any other ERC member or check our website for more information about that. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Susie Sidnor from Finance and Budget as our April 22 Employee of the Month. Okay, so if I may, you're good. Okay. Susie is one of the most... Susie is one of the most dedicated, dependable, knowledgeable employees we have. She is, she's gonna hate me for this, like a silent hero, you know? She probably has the only job in Calver County government that she has to be perfect 100% of the time because somebody will let her know when she's not, you know? But she has those weeks in there, right, where she's like, everything went fine. She is amazing in her job. And a shout out to all payroll specialists because they really make the world go round. I mean, why are we all here? You know, we love what we do, but, you know, at the end of the day, Susie's the one that makes it all worthwhile, right? So, Susie in general is always willing to help a coworker, and this recognition aligns with that, but on a bigger scale. The ARPA Hazard Award Funds came in, and Susie made sure all eligible employees received the hazard pay before the holiday break. Susie demonstrated selflessness, and it impacted more lives than she may realize. The ERC is delighted to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing this exceptional coworker for her consistent, strong work ethic, stellar customer service, and maybe sprinkled with a little holiday elf dust that day. Susie demonstrated one of the reasons that Calver County is an awesome place to live and work. Thank you, Susie, for all you do, and a big thanks to Finance and Budget for taking the time out to submit this nomination.
If you want to come up, we have an award for you, and we have your retirement check.
Good morning, I'm Beth Richmond, Deputy Director, Finance and Budget, don't make me cry. So Lisa said a lot of kind words, but I just want to put everything that happened in context. We get paid every two weeks. One week she's entering, one week she's running reports, doing system maintenance, getting ready to process for the next week. So this maintenance time is vital, especially right before the last payroll of the year. We've got to make sure W2s are right, we're adding, you know, data from the fire departments in, a lot of things going in to that last payroll of the year. But we said, hey, Susie, while you're doing all that, you know, let's also cut almost 850 checks worth 1.9 million. But wait a second, let's wait till December 14th to approve the final payout, get it entered, triple-checked by the 17th, so that the checks are cut on the 21st, right before the Christmas holiday. So, again, Lisa said lots of kind words, but put into context, stop what you're doing, and get this done with a smile, mostly, and you do pay us every two weeks. Everybody knows who Susie is, everybody emails Susie the second they think their check is a penny off, and she handles all those calls with kindness and gets it fixed. If, 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 if there was an error, we get it fixed, so...
But there's never been an error.
But there's never been an error, not, not that we can document. And thank you for all that you do.
Mark Willis County Administrator, I will say this, there are two things I want to point out. The first one is, Susie, all the times that you have to send me an email to have me correct something in my office, Sharon put me up to testing you in how you evaluate our payroll, and, and you do very well. Now, the other thing is, is that the, the timing of that ARPA check, I told the Commissioners, there's no way that we could have that check ready, that we were gonna go the first payday in January, and they demanded that it happen before Christmas. So I want you to know, and, and that's a true story, and then, and they said, Mark, you'd be the bad guy because you're good at it, right? But I, I just want to go on record that they're the culprits of that. But in all honesty, you know, you're a one-person show a lot of times, most of the time when it comes to that. And I, I know everybody behind me and all those staff that are watching certainly know that they can, because I've had to go to you for personal things as well. So, thank you for what you're doing, thank you. It is.
Hi, I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget. And I just want to reiterate with everyone, everyone else has said also that, you know, it is a stressful time for Susie during that week right before the holiday, but she was willing to put in the extra time so our employees got that extra pay right before the holidays to help them with the holiday season. Along with, we did get benefit holidays for the month of December into early January, so our employees would actually have an additional benefit during the holiday season. The work that Susie does is impeccable, and yes, she is one person that processes all payroll for all the county and some outside agencies that reimburse us for their payroll, we're a payroll agent for them. So she puts in a lot of time and effort to make sure our payroll is as accurate as possible. And I just want to publicly thank her for all her time and effort in getting her job done and making Finance and Budget look good. Thank you, Susie.
Do you want to limit it to 50 speakers?
I was just gonna ask, is there anybody else who'd like to say a few words?
You're awesome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Christmas sales were up 90% because of getting their chat. Be safe, be safe. Sharon, I thought we agreed to hire somebody to help her.
We are.
Okay. Good. Good, good.
So the next item on the agenda is Employee Recognition Committee, Ashley?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, my name is Ashley Brown, I work for the Soil Conservation Office, I'm an office specialist too. And today, I am here with the Employee Recognition Committee to award our scholarship winners for 2022. The ERC is pleased to offer two scholarships to graduating high school seniors whose parents or guardians work for Calver County Government. We also have a third scholarship for graduating high school senior who is a Calver County Government employee. Funds for the ERC scholarship for, I'm sorry, come from monies raised from the committee and not taxpayer dollars. A little bit about the process, in early March, the committee sent a notice out to county employees. Two members of the ERC redact all identifying information from the applications, and then a five-member committee made up of three members who have no dependence committing, competing, and two additional non-ERC employee members review and score the applications. These judges independently blind-score the applications based on a predetermined point system. I would like to personally thank all the members of the ERC Scholarship Committee for their hard work. The ERC would also like to thank our judges for their assistance in evaluating and scoring during this rigorous process. Applications are evaluated on many facets, including academic achievement, extracurricular activities, both in and outside of school, community service involvement, honors and awards, letters of recommendation, and a short essay. This year's applicants were asked to write about something they have changed their minds about in the last three years. This year, we received five applications, and we are thankful for all those that participated. And now, we would like to announce our top scorers. Without further ado, the runner-up for category of graduating high school senior who is a Calver County employee or eligible for in-house positions, Elena DiAgostino, a Calver High School grad, is the recipient of this $750 scholarship. Thank you. Elena, stay here for me. Her mother, Candace DiAgostino, works for Calver Alliance Against Substance Abuse, and Dad Phil retired from Parks and Rec, if you would like to have them join you. Elena is a graduating Calver High School with a 3.7 GPA. She is a member of the Class Council and Chess, sorry, Chess Club. In her high school career, she has participated in soccer, both indoor and outdoor travel teams, lacrosse and golf. She was the videographer and scorekeeper for the boys varsity basketball team. Elena is also involved outside of school, Farming for Hunger, Grapevine Early Learning Center, and Maryland Food Bank are but some of the organizations for which she volunteers. Because her plate was not already full, Elena is taking courses at CSM and works with the Whole South Center to pursue a career as an intensive support technician for children with autism. Elena has been courageous in opening up about her personal struggles with mental health, which is appropriate to speak on today, being amazed the Children's Mental Health Awareness Month, I'm sorry, Acceptance. But even then, she could not be stopped. After adopting her emotional support cat Stella, which she talks about in her essay, she wanted to help others who may be struggling as well, and thus organized a virtual mental health support group for teens called Accepting Who We Are. Congratulations, Elena, your considerable knowledge, skills, and abilities will serve you well at Coastal Carolina University and beyond. Thank you. Next up, in the category of graduating high school senior or dependent of a Calver County employee and recipient of another $750 award is Gabrielle Fox of Huntington High School. Her mother, Rhona Marie Hayes, is employed by the Sheriff's Office, if you would like to come forward with your daughter. No pressure. Thank you. Gabrielle is receiving, is graduating Huntington High School with a 4.06 GPA. During her high school career, she has served as a member of the Student Government Association, Class Council. She's a member of the Dan, uh, Varsity Dance Team, Varsity Indoor and Outdoor Track Teams. She is a member of the Calver County Sheriff's Office Explorer Post 91. She is President of the Best Buddies Program and Vice President with the Student Government. She also volunteers with CASA, she participates regularly in Church Kids Camp, Camp Junior Sheriff of Calver County, and has over 100 hours of community service as a rank of sergeant in the Explorers Post 91. Last year, she won Miss Tranquility 2021 at the Calver County Fair. And Gabrielle's letter of recommendation from Corporal Mark Robshaw, Lead Advisor of the Sheriff's Office Explorer Post 91, says Gabrielle has shown tremendous personal growth, which is reflected in her academic and wide range of extracurricular activities. Further, she is eager to mentor young explorers and has been recognized many times for her accomplishments in the post. In 2018, she was awarded with the Sheriff's Office Community Service Explorer of the Year Award. He further describes her character as trustworthy, consistent, helpful, and insightful. If you would all help me congratulate Gabrielle, as her hard work has not gone unnoticed, she is receiving a $750 scholarship to attend Florida Institute of Technology. Last but not least, in the first place for graduating high school senior or dependent of Calver County employee and recipient of the $1,500 scholarship, Judith Oller of Huntington High School. Judith's mom, Grace Oller, works in the Office on Aging, if she is here or anyone else that would like to join her. What to say about Judith? She is a senior graduating from Huntington High with a GPA of 4.01. She ranks 48th of 341 in her class. She is a member of the Maryland State Thespians, co-captain of the Huntington Improv Team, a theater student, a choir member, Assistant Head of Construction for Eye of Storm Productions at Huntington. Her vocal talent earned her a spot with the reputable Chamber Choir as well. She has also been accepted to All County Honors Chorus, Tri-County Honors Chorus, and the Maryland All-State Chorus in the past two years. Outside of school, Judith is very active in her church. There, she helps with the video production team, hospitality team, and worship team. She also volunteers at their food pantry, is a counselor, and she is a Voices of Praise Youth Choir member and council member. She has also participated in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. The choral director at Huntington, Sandra Grease, says of Judith, "She enjoys the challenge, takes constructive criticism and applies it, and is very willing to help her peers." Holly Reynolds Lee, Director of Voices and Praise, says Judith has a positive attitude, tireless work ethic, genuine kindness, and connects with everyone. She speaks highly of her vocal talent, and the audiences are spellbound, and her performances are magical to watch. Remarkably, between school, church, and volunteering, Judith finds time for her two jobs, one at Calver Pine Senior Center and the other at the barn at Pleasant Acres. Her list of accomplishments are many, her merits speak for themselves, and this is why she has secured the scholarship of $1,500 to attend Pennsylvania State University. Congratulations, Judith. Judith, Gabrielle, or Elena, if any of you would like to come up and speak on your scholarship, you're more than welcome. And Judith was asked to bring her essay in to read, and again, the topic was about, to speak on a topic about what you've changed your mind on in the past three years. So I'll let you take over.
Hello again, I'm Judith Oller, Huntington High School. And yes, something on which I've changed my mind in the past three years. My least favorite book of all time is Declan Donnellan's The Actor and the Target. I did not at all enjoy this book on acting theory, I detested it. We read it over about four months during my advanced acting class, and after the first few chapters, I wanted to find the author and let him know just how much trouble this book caused me. The practices and concepts that were discussed contradicted each other to their very foundation, but were somehow redundant and hypocritical at the same time. I hated that book. I felt like it just could not decide on what it wanted to be, and every time I looked at the book, I wanted to throw it in the trash. After every single chapter, I scoffed. I no longer scoff. It is vaguely frustrating to know that this book I detested so much has made such a change in my acting for the better. Donnellan's book was incredibly aggravating to read, and even more so to apply, because he was so often right. His main idea is that the target is always changing, which, after having put it to practice, is surprisingly helpful. I hated that book until, until I started using it. Used his exercises in class, and the difference it made was incredible. Approaching the content from a viewpoint of it being taught to be by my own teacher, who I knew and respected, made it much more understandable. And I made myself forget about my feelings for the book itself and focus only on the content and practice. My acting was better, which gave me more confidence, which in turn helped my acting and created a beautiful cycle. After finishing the book and utilizing his exercises and techniques, I viewed The Actor and the Target quite differently. Although I still dislike it, I developed a begrudging respect for it. I started off not liking that book, but after setting that aside and looking at just the content, piece by piece, I gained an appreciation for not just the book itself, but for the author and the immense thought that goes into the theory behind acting.
Hello again. We would like to invite each of the winners to come up and say a few words if they would like, and then have a picture of them with you guys and their families individually, if that's okay, and then as a group. So, would you like to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you for having me today and for everybody for the opportunity to apply for the scholarship, and my parents for supporting me and working for the county so that I could apply for the scholarship, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just also like to thank everybody for having me here today and for the committee for letting me have this opportunity and giving Elena and Judith this opportunity as well.
Let's do it this way, I'll take charge of photographs, definitely come up here. We're gonna give you three with the Commissioners, and then we're gonna bring each family up, and we're gonna make sure that you have it.
Let's switch in a little bit, please. Just official word. Scorch. Go. One, two. One more. One. You two ladies go back now. When you up in the order that you presented. We are, we're getting it right now. Oh, I see. They talk in this in the morning. Yes, ma'am. Chop, chop.
I know, I'm sorry, we're older. Takes us a little bit more time.
I've got a lieutenant commander out there somewhere watching me, saying those I've got.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all the winners.
Well, it's good to see you Marines are maintaining the reputation for excellence.
Appreciate that advertisement.
You should stick around all day.
As a parent, can I just take a moment to tell you how my family has thrived in Calver County? So, as a retired naval officer, and in my enlisted years, we traveled around quite a bit throughout the country, lived in many, many different places, many different states, different regions of the country. We came here when I started working at the Navy Yard. The family moved down here in 2015, and we have thrived. The middle school teachers and creative arts were amazing, and athletics, amazing. High school teachers, creative arts, athletics, amazing. The senior center, the office on aging, so there are five in my immediate family, myself, my wife, three kids. All of those have worked for or do work for Calver County, and they have thrived here. You may recall, my oldest, Dorothea Scarlett Oller, worked in planning and zoning, and she worked in enforcement, and she worked at the Aquatic Center. My son was a lifeguard here, thrived. My lovely wife in the office on aging, and she is thriving there, really enjoying what she brings to the county, and she especially praises the people that she works with. She just loves working with the team. And my oldest really, really loved working with Mark Willis, and said a lot of great things about him, and I was not paid for that endorsement.
You said it with a straight face.
Law enforcement, we've had some very, very positive interactions with law enforcement. I know you don't hear that a lot, but my teenage son had a little opportunity to interact with them, and they were wonderful toward him. He actually had an accident that was not his fault. And they took care of him in the rain and the cold. It was good. The whole family has thrived because of the culture that Calver County has, because of the investments you put into the performing arts. As you've heard, my daughter thrives in the performing arts here. You have great teachers here, great schools. It's a lovely place to live, and I would say it's probably the best county I've ever lived in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could he come in every week and speak?
No. No. And don't tell anybody outside of Calver County what you just said.
Is that part of that travel report?
Yeah, well, come and visit, spend money, go home.
Right.
Thank you, all have a good day.
So, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Department of Public Safety Budget Adjustment 046. Mr. Richardson.
Good morning, sir.
Morning, sir.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning again, Commissioners. I'm Jim Richardson, Division Chief for Fire Rescue EMS with the Calver County Department of Public Safety. Today, we're conducting a public hearing regarding the budget adjustment BA 048 CIP for the transfer of available capital funding in the Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department to the Calver County Career Emergency Medical Services Division in order to purchase an advanced life support transport unit. This public hearing was duly advertised in county newspapers for two consecutive weeks before the public hearing and the Calver County Government website as required by Section 5-103(c) of the code. If you wish to provide comment on the budget adjustment 046 CIP, please sign up using the sign-up sheet located in the front of the hearing room, or you can call 1-888-475-4499 or 1-877-853-5257 and press star nine when the floor is open for public comment on this specific item as called on by the county attorney. Those calling to speak on budget adjustment BA 046 CIP must stay on the line. We'll have an opportunity to press star nine after the presentation has concluded. Background, the Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department requested the Fire and Rescue Association reduce their apparatus allotment from two ambulances to one ambulance. The Fire and Rescue Association approved and forwarded the request to the Fire and Rescue Commission with a recommendation for approval. The Fire and Rescue Commission approved the allotment reduction on January 25, 2022. There is currently a county staffed unit assigned at Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department which maintains the capability of two ambulances at the Dunkirk Fire Department. There is currently $470,816 of available funding in the following various Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department projects. An FY 2022 replacement for ambulance 5-8 at $249,000. Remaining funds for ambulance 5-9 replacement of $118,118, and that project is complete. And the truck five funding of $203,698 remains, and that project is complete. Budget adjustment 046 would transfer the $470,816 available balance to Career Emergency Medical Service Division in order to purchase an ALS transport unit. The current estimate for this unit with ALS equipment is $465,000. Fiscal impact would be the Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department CIP currently has an available balance of the $470,816 between the three projects previously indicated. In order to maintain an adequate number of transport units in the county, the Department of Public Safety, following the acceptance of any public comment, requests a motion to close the record, approve and adopt the budget adjustment 046 CIP as submitted.
Mr. President, there's no one who has signed up in the room. There is one caller on Zoom. We'll ask them to press star nine if they wish to provide comment at this public hearing. This caller with last four digits, 1910, please press star nine if you wish to provide There are no speakers. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. President, I move that we close the record and adopt and sign the resolution approving budget adjustment 046 CIP.
Second?
I have a motion in the second that we close the record, adopt, and sign the resolution approving budget adjustment 046 CIP. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item on the agenda is old business, Department of Public Works' election board voting facility lease agreement. Mr. Jones. Good morning.
Staff and citizens, my name is Tom Jones. I am the deputy director of DPW for General Services. Today, I will be bringing memo titled Election Board Voting Facility Lease Agreement. The background, a board accounting commissioner, B OCC, public hearing was held Tuesday, April 26, 2022, on staff's recommendation to approve budget adjustment number 176 for the amount of $377,000 to the election board slash Fairview CIP to initiate placement of a new election board voting facility. The new facility would consist of a 60-by-24 Ready Plex ADA compliant trailer rental. Discussion, both the county and Williams Scott, Inc., Will Scott, have entered into a seven-month lease agreement from June 1, 2022, until November 30 of 2022, defining the terms and conditions of the trailer rental. Physical impact, the lease agreement of $58,820.34 includes reoccurring bill charges, delivery, installation, and return. Conclusion, staff recommends that the B OCC authorize the board president to sign the lease agreement.
Pleasure of the board.
Is there a motion? Or I was waiting on Steve.
Move to approve.
Hey, I learned from last week.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Phew. I have a motion in the second that we authorize the board president to sign the lease agreement. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jones. I wasn't sure where we were going there for a minute.
Thought this was like a budget question or something.
Jeez. Next item on the agenda is consent. There are two items, Department of Finance and Budget Child Support Lease Agreements. Item number two, Department of Finance and Budget, Calver County Sheriff's Office Child Support Additional Budget Modification. Are there any corrections or objections to the two items on consent? Hearing none. Those items will be adopted as presented. Next item on the agenda is new business, Department of Economic Development Business Appreciation Week. Director Obergeorg.
Sure. Wow, busy day here today. Okay, so my name is Julie Obergeorg. I'm the Director of Economic Development. Thank you for having me here today. Go ahead and read the memo. Since fiscal year 2006, one of the Department of Economics Development's signature events has been a Business Appreciation Week to highlight your commitment to the local business community. Last year, due to COVID-19, economic development retooled traditional Business Appreciation Week activities to virtual back-to-business celebration. Although this was a successful event, we're pleased to share that this year, Business Appreciation Week will once again be in person. It's an opportunity to increase public awareness about the positive impact businesses have on the local economy and the county's commitment to assisting them in their success, especially during difficult circumstances. Economic Development has scheduled you to participate in ambassador team site visits today. Ambassador teams will consist of a Board of County Commissioner, an Economic Development staff, and a business resource partner. We're going to be meeting with pre-selected Calver County businesses to learn about the business. They will ask questions about how the county is doing and answer any questions business owners may have. These visits will provide an excellent forum for our business owners to discuss with their elected officials how government works to support them. It also provides a vehicle for you and the department staff to enhance our knowledge about the county companies and express appreciation for their contributions to the economy. This year, we'll be making 15 ambassador team site visits, which will consist of a small business, a tourist, and an agriculture location. Each team will complete three visits, one from each category. All ambassador team members are invited to Calvert Health, excuse me, for lunch at noon. An economic development staff will provide a brief overview of the day, and ambassador teams will depart at about 12:45 for site visits. At the conclusion of the ambassador team visits, we will visit the farmer's market and Calvert Health to meet the vendors. You'll receive, you received an email on Friday that had the agenda, the information sheets, and questions for each visit, and we're also going to have a printed copy for you. In addition to the ambassador team visits, there are several other events being planned throughout this week. You can find additional information and registration at ecalvert.com/baw. The department budgeted $3,000 for the Business Appreciation Week events, and that's all I have. When we go to the hospital for lunch, you will need a mask, so I do have some masks here for you, in case you don't have any with you, and that's all I have. Looking forward to having you with us today. Thank you.
I thought we were having lunch at Salsa Rita's.
We were having Salsa Rita's, but it's at the hospital.
Oh, it's at the hospital, gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director Obergeorg. We all look forward to today's activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. County Attorney. Thank you. I don't see anyone in the room, so there are now two callers that have joined the Zoom call. One ending in 1910, the other ending in 2803. If you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine. Okay. One caller, 2803, who's raised their hand to provide public comment. You're asked to identify yourself and state whether you're speaking on behalf of an organization or as an individual. You may have to press star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Cormier, and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself this morning. I just wanted to call in and again, thank the board for their support, Commissioners McConkey and Commissioners Gadway for joining us at the CCAC Awards, where we were able to celebrate the leaders in special education from our teachers and our educational support staff to our bus drivers, our administrative professionals. Thank you so much for joining us for that. I'd like to thank Commissioner Gadway for coming out to the inclusive track and field event and supporting us, getting those kids out there, and involved in the community is the most important thing that we do, and we appreciate all your support. I also want to say, on a personal note, I attended the planning and zoning meeting, and I was disappointed to hear that the people who are taking over Armory Square are going to put in another car wash and gas station directly across the street from the car wash and gas station we already have in downtown Prince Frederick. It just doesn't make sense, and I was hoping for something better for our community in that space, and your vote on the TDR just doesn't make sense to me. We haven't stopped the building, we haven't slowed the building, we've just made the building more expensive. If you wanted to slow it, you should have provided a cap on X amount of permits supplied per quarter. I hope to keep learning about that process, and I appreciate all the decisions you have to make. Thank you so much, and have a great afternoon.
No one else has raised their hand. Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart.
As Commissioner Williams would always say, we have public comment every day at the business, so it was a very, very busy week of that, but I want to really get to Sunday is Mother's Day, and I can't think of a more important person in most of our lives besides our children is Mom. She's the center of everything, and if you ever had to see the process and everything they go through, you really understand. I tell my kids, I'm like, if you knew how hard it was on Mom for you to get here, boy. So, Mom definitely carries, does all the heavy lifting and stuff, and I just want to thank you, thank you to all the Moms out there, and let's not forget them.
Commissioner McConkey?
Yeah, just want to say, last week was a very busy week. We had a meeting, we had a forum, we had a public hearing. This week's busy too. We all have a busy schedule today. We're going to go around and visit businesses for Business Appreciation Week, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Gadway?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a couple other have mentioned, we had the forum on Wednesday. I want to thank Calver Broadcast for coming out, making sure that that was available to be filmed and for everybody to see. Same with the Thursday night joint meeting with Planning Commission. I want to thank Planning and Zoning staff and everybody else for coming out and helping with that. Thursday day, as Mr. Cormier mentioned, had a great time at the Special Olympics Inclusion Track and Field Event. Please, everybody, if you get the opportunities, go out and watch. It really warms the heart. Saturday evening, I had the pleasure of attending the Southern Maryland Volunteer Fire Association Memorial Dinner Banquet and Awards, representing Calver County down there. To, and special thank you to Jeff Clements, outgoing president, I believe, Potomac Heights.